I'll second that.
Motion is second.
What was the motion on the floor, I'm sorry?
Uh, wearing of masks.
Well, I-
To put it on the agenda.
Yes, to put it on the agenda.
Okay, motion is second.
To add that to the agenda for discussion, or we gonna discuss it right now?
Throw it ahead to the agenda. Got it, we roll call it.
Mr. Newman?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Alright, so now approval of the agenda.
Where do you want to add that to the agenda?
Uh, let's add it at, uh, next, by the consent agenda. Get it out of the way.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
With the amendment?
What with the amendment?
Yeah, with the amendment.
Hallmark, please say yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, I said yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Here a motion for the consent agenda.
Recognition of visitors?
Oh, it is, isn't it? Recognition of visitors. You may wish to speak about anything that's on the agenda. Start your night, please.
Jacob Collier. I am here today to respect for my mother, Jennifer Brewster. She is a senior economics and government teacher at Lowndes High School. She's currently the only one, the only teacher at the high school who teaches government economics. She has shared with me her concern about not offering a mask mandate for her students, as well as herself and our family. Seniors are older, they're a lot more susceptible to despires versus very young children. Um, she had shared with me that she has thirty-three desks in her classroom. In her first block class, she has thirty-two children registered. She has shared pictures with me and other teachers about the spacing and her concerns. Many of the other teachers also expressing their concerns. We have a lot of specialized teachers who teach just one specific class, who a lot of kids have to take as a requirement. So I just wanted to speak today and out of respect for my mom and her students and her students' families, that we highly consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Can I ask my question?
Yes.
Jacob, you weren't calling your mother a senior, was you? You weren't calling your mother a senior, was you?
No, I said she teaches seniors.
Oh, I thought, I was gonna say, she's my age, buddy, I was gonna say, come on. I thought we were tight, man.
Anyone else? That's all.
I wasn't gonna talk about this, but since you did bring up the subject of masks, I hope that if you do consider masks, that you do consider the shield as well, uh, because it is hard to breathe in a mask. And at least with the shield, I know my doctor said, uh, I would have more protection with the shield. So I hope that that's an option too. Thank you.
Your bail. Okay, we brought along to the consent agenda. The mask.
Mask first. Mask then the consent agenda?
Yeah, mask. Okay, let's go through the mask. I forgot where I put it.
Well, um, I like, will have had lots of people contact me in reference to the mask. A lot of those are teachers, and as you know, I'm a teacher, and I'm getting ready to go back to school too, so, um, I do understand, I guess, their, their fear. So with that being said, I contacted a pediatrician because I do not have the answers, nor do I claim to have them, but I think it's best that we speak to someone who does have more knowledge in reference to masks when it comes to kids, since that's what we're in the business of. So anyway, after that discussion, um, and it was lengthy, I would say probably thirty or forty minutes of, you know, what is best for kids and teachers, not just kids, but teachers, because if they go down, you don't have school. If they are not in the classroom, then you don't have school, period, um, because they have to be able to teach. So with that being said, I asked, because I teach in elementary, what, what are the risks with elementary kids? Tell me the data. I wanna know from someone who does it every day. And basically, um, what the pediatrician told me was that there's not a lot of data that states that little kids, um, transfer to adults. So, you know, I don't know, all I can tell you is what was told to me. Then I asked about middle school kids. I've taught middle school, um, and they take up a lot of space in the classroom, I understand that. But I also know that they are still, most of them, not teenagers. Um, so they're still, in my eyes, I guess, younger kids when I think about middle school kids. If they were teenagers, I think I would look at it a little differently. But a lot of them aren't. They've become teenagers usually in the eighth grade, um, toward the end of eighth grade, most of the time. So I asked in reference to how about middle school kids? Um, and I was told that's kinda up in the air, because there's not any data there either that supports that. So, you know, I wrote that down. And then I asked about high school kids. Now, I want you to think about high school kids, because they're older. They're not, um, you know, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven. They're older kids, those are considered young adults. And those kids maybe do, and they congregate, just, you know, they get together, they like to be together, they like to be close together. And with that being said, I said, well, what do you think about those masks when it comes to them? And I was told by a pediatrician, probably should wear the mask with those high school kids. Um, are they gonna like that? No, I don't think so. Um, you know, but at the same time, I wanna protect them, and I wanna protect the teachers. I did ask, you know, if a high school kid gets it, what do you think that looks like? Um, because I don't know, and I was told that, you know, it could be something not real severe, look like a cold, but then again, it could be. I guess it depends on what their immune system is like and what their condition is, health-wise. So with that being said, um, and the information that I gained, I think that probably high school kids, we should consider about adding that they have been required to wear the mask.
So you're saying just the high school kids have to wear the mask?
I'm saying just the high school kids, based on what I gathered today.
Is that your motion?
Well, if anybody else wants to talk, I'll let them have something to say, but... If they've got something to say, they're welcome to say it, but I'm just telling you what I gathered. Um, maybe someone else has something different.
Is that a form of emotion?
Is anybody else gonna say anything? Well, then that's in the form of a motion, that high school kids be required to wear a mask and their teachers.
Well, let's, let's have some discussion on the whole thing before we come to that, if, if we can, if you don't mind.
Go out here a second. Go out here a second.
A second, yeah. I would add certainly middle school kids to that, and if not elementary, I'd, I'd do it for the whole thing, really, to be honest. Realizing that it'll be difficult to do, there's no doubt about that. One of the things that I've been reading about, the, the younger children, they may carry it, they may not get sick from it, but they can pass it on to someone else. And, and so, uh, that's what we don't know, even if they're not a sick child at all, if they can pass it on to middle school aged or adult children or their teachers, uh, we, we still have a serious problem. So, uh, I would add it, and particularly with the spike we're giving now in East Tennessee right now, uh, even from two weeks ago when we met, uh, you know, it, it, the numbers are going up dramatically, and, and I, I really think we need to do it for our, for our student population. We're one of the few school systems in the area that's not doing that, uh, at the current time. I'm obviously not a very good mask wearer. If you, if you look at most of the school districts in the area, they could be trying to look at the mask situation. And, uh, I would recommend that we do that. All grades.
Three times in your short little speech right there, you had to pull your mask up.
I did, yes.
So, you know, and what, I'm, I'm not an expert at all, but I know what cross contamination is. Everything you touched on that desk, and you touched your nose and all that stuff, you've cross contaminated your... If anybody says touch this, you've cross contaminated your mask. So can we imagine if we got a kid, I mean, I got a seven-year-old, granted. You know, I wanna protect him as much as I can, you know. Uh, I think that Mike and his crew has done a, a, an excellent job of putting together a plan to give, give people the option. And I think that's what, as parents, we want. We want the option, okay? We, we want the option to be able to say, okay, I'm gonna send my kid, or I'm not gonna send my kid. Uh, I think Kim's point is pretty valid. I think that's a good point. I think that we could expect kids, older kids, to probably wear a mask, probably do it all day. Not gonna like it. They're not gonna like it one bit. Um, but there again, there's gonna be the cross, you know, contamination. I can just imagine what some of these kids would do to each other with their mask, and do to their mask, and then, you know, we're gonna have another issue.
If I had to wear this all the time, I'd go to the shield.
Well, and see, that's another good point, but, but I think what, what, and I too got some, I got some phone calls. I got an email from, uh, uh, one of our teachers that was for the mask. Uh, I think Ms. Catchem is for the mask, and, and she's my favorite middle school teacher ever, so... Uh, you know, so it's hard for me to go against anything that Ms. Catchem says, so... Uh, but, uh, and, and then I got a phone call, and then I got another email that were against the mask. One of the teachers, I think she was a North Middle teacher, she said, you know, she was concerned that if she had her mask over some of her kids, you know, with some, some issues, may not be able to see her talk, and may not understand what she's saying. I have a hard time understanding what, what Mr. Evans says, when he's got his on, but, um... I, I just thinking, you know, I, it, it's, this is a, it's... I've not done all the research. I've looked at what you see on here, the, the, what is it? The World Health Organization says that you shouldn't wear a mask unless you're, um, you're treating somebody that's got the symptoms, or you had the symptoms. Well, if they had the symptoms, they're not gonna be in our school. If they come to school and they got a cough and a fever and all that, they're, we're, we've already, he's got guidelines and plans. I think at this time, it's, it's time for us to cert, to, to, and, and I, and, you know, I, I appreciate everybody's bigger opinion. I was trying to butt head the end, but he deserved it. But, but I think we need to, you know, our director and his crew have put together, you know, the best plan in this situation, 'cause tomorrow, they may come in here and say, hey, listen, y'all ain't starting school till whenever, you know, everything's a change. And, and it's gonna keep peaking, and it's gonna keep going up and down. And, I mean, we're at such un, un, unforeseen times, that, I mean, I just, I just think that we need to stick with the plan that we got.
Well, he, he's wanting me in elementary. If we mandate masks for all the students, that means all the football players are going out to wear them during football games and everything else, 'cause they're our students. Cheerleaders, everybody, because they've released football today, or, or is it yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
There's a lot of guidelines.
Yes. But it, uh, can you imagine trying to play in the mask?
Not if you ma, not if you mandated masks in, just inside the school building, your football player wouldn't have to wear a mask.
Okay, why would you just do that just inside the building, if we're going to, if we're going to mandate masks? So parents that's gonna send their kids to school, decided, okay, we know that they don't have to wear a mask, the ones that won't wear a mask are going virtual.
So how do you enforce it? What do you do if a kid decides he don't wanna wear a mask? Or a teacher? How are you gonna enforce it?
It's a difficult situation we're in, gang. We're rolling the dice here, but the bottom line is, we can't, we, we can't enforce this thing. I highly suggest it, like I said last time, but, got the... Mr. Garen, we've done the best job that we can with this. Like we said, the state may come and mandate it tomorrow, who knows? But I would highly suggest it, we should, we should support wearing a mask at all our schools, but we should stop there.
And, and let, let me say, you know, and I appreciate your comments, Scotty. This is the board's plan. This is not my plan. And you have full liberty to adjust or unadjust anything that's on there. We just presented to you what we thought was, at that time, a, a, a good plan, and that's for you all to, to decide, so... The continuous learning plan, I think, is a great plan. The reopening plan, I think, was a good, good plan, but I think it's, it's how you wanna make it, it's your plan, not my plan.
What does the plan currently say about masks? Does it say encourage, or does it not say anything at all in there? I don't remember at this point.
The current plan says that staff, so face coverings are recommended when they can be worn appropriately without touching, you know, with good hand hygiene for students and staff, but not required. So recommended when, when they can be done appropriately, but not required, it's how it's stated.
If not a face mask, can they at least wear a shield?
And when, in, in, in the, in the plan, it says face coverings. It doesn't specify the point of mask and a shield.
But just if you can't understand them with the mask on, then at least they can see what they're saying through the shield and possibly be able to hear them better through the shield.
I, I think that distance is an important thing with that also. If a teacher's standing in front of the classroom, six, seven feet away from the children, I don't think she has to have her mask on if she's trying to communicate with that group. But if she's right next to a child, you know, instructing that particular child, then I think that mask is very important. So I think that needs to be assumed or built in, in some way or other, that, you know, the masks should be worn when appropriate, or, or some such standard.
I know some, I think a few systems have said, when social distancing cannot be achieved. And if you, whatever you do here tonight, I don't know, but whatever you do, you know, we'll just need clear direction, because, I mean, it can stay as is, or you can say, you know, we're requiring it for staff, we're requiring it for staff and high school students, we're requiring it for everybody. Whatever you do, we'll just need some clear direction on how, however you do, or whatever you do, if you make any changes, we'll just need clear direction on what you want, like what you're saying. If you, you know, do you want it in common areas, do you want it in classrooms, do you want it everywhere? Do you want it when you're within six feet or outside six feet?
It's huge.
Yeah, it is, no doubt about it.
Alright, is there anybody else?
Mike, you, in our last meeting, you say you, you were gonna supply all, all the teachers with the mask, with the, with the shields?
We have face shields that we sent out for every teacher today, and then the Health Department has given us boxes and boxes of masks that we're gonna put on the buses and in the school, so...
Uh, do we have to vote on the motion, much forward his amendments, and then the amendments? Are you amending it to count everybody?
I, I'm confused myself at this particular point, as to where we are with it, so... Her original motion was high school only. I, I added, okay, okay, I guess is what I had. It was the high school kids and teachers?
Pre-K through eight.
I just said high school. The, the information I got was only for high school.
Was it teachers and kids, or kids?
Teachers and kids.
So teachers across the board, or just high school teachers?
High school teachers.
High school teachers and high school kids was what your motion was, okay.
And I think it's like, it was staying, you know, common sense is gonna have to come into play. If you're sitting, you know, three to six feet away, you know, I don't think that I'd need that mask on. You know, I think you gotta, you gotta think about that, because if we're going out to a restaurant and we get in line to go in, and they've got these, you can't go anywhere, they don't have X's on the floor, you know, stating that this is enough space. So like Mr. Evans said, if you are, if you are standing in front of that class, and those kids are, you know, eight feet away, I don't think that mask is needed. I think that's just, you know, common sense to say, while I'm teaching the lesson, I can take that off. But now I'm gonna go over and instruct, you know, feel, and I need to put it back on, you know.
There's a lot of difference in common sense in that piece of paper.
Well, there is, but...
But your motion said that they need to wear them all the time.
I think that it, that they need to wear them, because that is the, that's what has been brought to me.
So we have to vote on her motion first, then add the amendments, correct?
Just like Scotty said, cross contamination, if every time you're not close to the kids, you're taking it off with a dirty hand, and then you put it back on, you're putting the front of the mask that just touched your dirty hand next to the kids.
Well, I understand that, but I want you to remember, I sit on this board as a representative of the people that put me here. So when they call me and say, or they send me emails that say, hey, Kim, this is what I want you to do. I mean, like I said, I'm going to work too, you know, and I'm gonna go with kids, but you're trying to shoot the messenger. You know, but when those people contact me that are in that position, that stand in front of those kids every day, I'm not that high school teacher. I don't stand there, I don't teach high school kids. But they do, and I think that when they are concerned, that means that I should be concerned. If that's what they want, you know, then, then I'm gonna do my best to put what they want on the table. Whether we voted up or down, that is our choice. But I think they do need a voice, and I don't care to bring what they want to you and share it with you, and if you vote yes or no, you know, that, that's your choices.
Hey, Kim, can I ask you, which pediatrician you talked to?
Uh, I'm not gonna share that, 'cause I promised it would be confidential.
Because it's usually, I mean, there's a couple of different pediatricians in this county. One that's all for them, and the other one that's in the same office, that's not necessarily for it, so...
Um, like I said, I, I did go through each gamut of kids, because that's how we're divided.
But I think what you've done was great, I appreciate that.
And, and go back to what Scotty said, I will say, I had a meeting again this week with the Health Department and Dr. Guider, who is our medical director, and he does strongly encourage, which I think probably one you're referencing.
I'll second Gary's amendment.
Okay, so we have to have a second. Are we done? So the motion reads what? K through twelve. Is that going to encompass everything on campus? Is that ball, is that ballgames, is that everything?
In the building.
In the building.
T double S double A's that mandated you wear a mask? T double S double A's mandated you would wear a mask if you were going to vote it?
Kenny, so the motion on the floor is, uh, that masks for K through twelve, only in buildings.
In the buildings.
Can, can I ask one clarifying question? Just, just for operational sake. We, we operate pre-K through twelve, so are you exempting pre-K kids? Just so I'm clear.
I had the pre-K to it.
So you're saying, pre-K through twelve, inside the buildings?
Does Kim not have to amend her own motion?
Okay.
Need to make that clear when we vote on it.
So right now, we are voting on the amendments. And that's pre-K through twelve, inside the building? Okay, let's just add that to her motion.
Teachers and kids. Can you say it, Kate, one, one time, just to make sure everybody's clear?
To mandate wearing masks, pre-K through twelve, teachers and student, inside the building.
Okay, that's just to amend the motion. Alright, can you roll call that?
Mr. Jenkins?
This is for just adding it to her motion. This is the amendments to the motion.
This is not the vote, this is just to add it to the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
No.
Ms. Bridges?
Pre-K through twelve. No.
Mr. Roddings?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
No.
So... That would mean the amendment failed, and we'd have to go back to her original motion, correct? Right, and your original motion was high school only, correct?
Yes.
Inside the building.
Inside the building.
Mandate masks for inside the building for high school kids and teachers.
When social distancing is not possible.
So let me ask you a question on that, because, I mean, you got bring back, if you're gonna mandate it for high school students, you got bring back school, which has pre-K through twelve. We're gonna have just certain students in that building wearing masks and no one else?
I agree.
Okay.
So she has added, when social distancing is not possible. Yes, please read it.
Mandate masks for high school kids and teachers when social distancing is not possible inside the building.
Is there, is there a second on that?
Yes, Dr. Evans, second.
Okay, so now we just took our teachers. So we're now gonna have to enforce kids wearing masks and determine if it's social distancing or not. So now we're taking away the educational... And we will, we're gonna have enough things against us right now, we're just adding to the burden on the teachers. Either say all the time, or, or not. Not just when it's convenient. Or social distancing.
Alright, as read.
For high school kids and teachers to wear masks in the building when social distancing is not present or possible.
Roll call it, please.
Mr. Moffett?
Although I think it's, it's every person's own right to choose what they wanna do, I'm gonna vote no. I think you make your own choice.
Ms. Bridges?
I kinda agree with Mr. Moffett, but I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Roddings?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
Mr. Solomon?
Uh, no.
Mr. Newman?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Makes it a lot of time there.
No.
Consent agenda. Your motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
I said go out here a second.
Second.
Alright, all on paper, say yes?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty. Mr. Garen?
Uh, recommend approval of the res, resolution that the SBA has proposed to us.
Your motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call that, please.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Hi.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Continuous learning plan.
Uh, I recommend approval of the continuous learning plan that I presented to you at workshop. I feel like it's a good model at the state. Uh, as, and, and I wanna also point out that I know there are expenses associated with it, uh, but those would hopefully be non-recurring expenses, because hopefully we'll just have to, to do that this year.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Since there's money involved, will you roll call that, please?
Mr. Roddings?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Esther Grant?
Uh, recommend approval by the, the Esther Grant, the state approved our changes today to be able to purchase before the virtual program and then to offset stifling costs for teachers.
Your motion.
Who?
Second.
First and second. Will you roll call that, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Roddings?
The one forty-one budget amendments, as, which had presented them, Mr. Garen?
Uh, it's, again, that's, that's the additional stipends for the teachers, I would recommend approving that. And then also, I, I do, go ahead. I, I'll do my other director's report.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. How much money's involved in this?
Three hundred and eighteen was, that's based on current enrollment, so that could, you know, I'll bring the amendment back to you, but I'm just letting you know, it could go up or down, whether we have kids come in or out. But I, that's the best estimate I have, based upon the numbers we have, at this time.
Kelly, will you roll call, please?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Roddings?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Alright. Mr. Garen, your record's report.
Uh, I, just to let you know, I sent, uh, uh, I talked with my representative, Russell, yesterday, I mean, I... I mean, I have said in the past, and Kim was very well aware of this, that I had applied for a waiver for the Tom Cronin PE Act. Where we've got to do two thirty minute sessions with a certified PE teacher every week, which we're doing that now, just not with a certified PE teacher. So that would cause us to incur some additional costs in staffing. The state board of education is supposed to vote on those waivers tomorrow. The state department of education has recommended approval of the waivers relative to that. But I think there are some state legislatures that are advocating for that not to be approved. So I reached out to Mr. Russell to let him know that our system lost two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a few weeks ago because the governor pulled back the two percent raise. If you remember the last meeting, we had to pull, we had to absorb that in fund balance. And that we're having additional costs associated with remote, remote learning because of the COVID and expressed our costs there, coming out of fund balance. And that if I had to take on additional costs, essentially this would be our contingency teachers, one or two of them, to, to pull in the PE teachers, that I felt like that was unnecessarily cumbersome on our system. So we will find, all that to say, I'll find out tomorrow if I have to hire another PE teacher or not. But I will keep you informed as we move forward, but if I do, I mean, it's because I, it's state law, because I have to. But just so you're aware, that may be, it'd be a contingency, you know? And I will say too, that when I talked to Ms. Amber Nudet at Loudon Elementary, even though we're gonna vote, she's still growing. You know, if you remember last year, we had to add two teachers there and her kindergarten is growing again, she said. So there's the potential down there for one more as well, just for full disclosures, you know what I'm doing with it. But I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow when I find out whether or not that, that, there were some other waivers that we requested as well, that we should find out on tomorrow as well. Hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two meals was our total count for summer feeding. Hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two, so I want to thank Allison May and her staff and all the bus drivers and all the volunteers that, that made that work. I will say that a lot of the waivers are gone away that allowed us to do that, so depending on what comes back, if we have a remote closure, I'm not sure what food distribution will look like, depending on what the state allows us to do. But we'll do the best we can, given the parameters we have to work with. As Scotty said earlier, T double S double A released some guidelines late last night, we're starting to review those, so probably at the August workshop, we'll try to bring your proposal on, because they've left, they've required some things, like masks, temperature checks for everybody that goes into the stadium, referees, students, volunteers, whoever.
Discouraging.
Anybody that's discouraging.
Did they, did they ask or say how many you want to allow in the stadium, you have to stay six feet from?
This is, this is where, where, what I was getting ready to say, those were requirements, and then they've got recommendations, like everybody has recommendations on seating capacity, uh, uh, concession area and things like that. So we'll bring, we'll get with the athletic directors and bring you back what they think. And then you all can tell us what to do with athletics next, since you've had, you, you've had such a. Yes, I, I'll keep bringing it to you, so you'll, you'll be able to help us with that next time. So Mr. Tinkers will get the athletic directors next week and see what, what we can do there. And all that's contingent upon executive order being lifted on August the twenty-ninth or thirtieth, whenever that's, that's lifted. But we are, we do, we are getting some guidelines from, from them, so. I want to remind everybody, August first graduation at Loudon Empathiator, with Loudon High School at, at nine o'clock and Greenback at two. I'm hoping we get just a brief cold spell for one day, I don't know if this is gonna happen or not, but then we'll be able to close out last year and then start it again. And like I said before, you know, any, anything other than the stagger, if we have to do anything, I'll keep in communication with you about the start of school, but right now, I think we're good to go for August the seventh, unless the board directs me otherwise between now and then.
Anybody have anything else?
What time do you say the graduations were?
Loudon High School's at nine.
I thought it was ten.
Ten, okay, ten and two, you're right, ten and two. I thought it should have been nine, but it was ten, you're correct, I apologize. Ten o'clock for Loudon High School, two o'clock for Greenback. I wanted it to be nine, but I always get what I want.
Two o'clock will be off.
I was just gonna give a update on athletics, we mandated a little bit today. And volleyball will now be allowed in the, across the county to have practices of more than ten, because they're considered a non-contact sport. And football will remain doing what they have been doing until the order is lifted or until August the twenty-ninth. So they still will not be doing, doing contact or anything like that at this time. Golf and cross country can have, can continue to practice and play in their games and matches. When volleyball's schedule begins to play, their game schedule is upon them, they can play in those, but they can't have any scrimmages or anything until that time, just so you're aware. There, there may be some things going on in the, in the building, some games, but football, another contact sport, will be limited to what they've been doing at this time.
Anything else? Your motion, second.
Wait, I have a question, you all didn't talk about the workshop date happening on the election night.
It wasn't on the agenda.
He said you all would discuss it.
I, I said they would, if, if it gets changed, they will change it. I, I don't set the date, that was the scheduled date, so they can.
The executive committee can change it, you can talk to Bobby and they can change it being elected day. I would be for, I would be for changing it.
Well, give me some directions.
I mean, because we're gonna have to come down here, because they'll have that up there.
So the workshop, same day, so six o'clock, whatever, as the board meet.
What, what I will do.
We'll have a lot to chew over here to come where.
If it's, if it's okay with, if it's okay with the board, let's see how things go over the next week or so, and then we'll set a date, because our actual meetings after school starts, so if we happen to need a meeting before school starts, then I, then we could set one, set one then, if that's okay. And then we'll obviously publicize that out.
I have a motion, go ahead, second. Second, thank you.
Quit looking at me.
He's being well enough of a little.
No, I can't think well enough of me.
Because you've got two school board members that are involved in the election, but.
My stomach's low.
Yes.
A little bit.
Well, I forgot about you. I forgot about mine, too. Did that makes you feel any better?
Don't make me feel any better. How could you forget about me?
Because you're way, I went back to my way at the university. I'm sorry, I apologize.